The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call please.
Holland.
Here.
House better here. Vaughn.
Here.
Colin. Here. Offie.
Here.
She maker. Here.
We have a wish to excuse Karen from tonight's meeting.
Come on in.
Second. Holland.
Hi.
Offie.
Aye.
She maker.
Aye.
Colin.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
House better. Aye.
Thank you. Good evening. Do we have any visitors at West Dress Council this evening?
Yes.
Please stand up. State your name, please.
I'm Mark Fowler, and with me...
Melissa Schrock.
Welcome.
Thank you.
So, what would you like to...
Uh, someone go ahead? Go ahead.
You know, you start.
Okay.
Mark had...
Yeah.
...a free picture. Mark had a contact me last week or so about potential to put in community garden, community raised bed, garden space in Airport Park. If you remember, they were very involved with the pickleball court and park improvement discussions last... A while ago.
A while ago.
Yeah.
Yes.
So he reached out and I told him the best thing to do would be coming to the dress guys, so that's what they're here for. Go ahead.
Great. Um, yeah, he kind of summed things up there. We're actually, uh, we would like to be able to have the possibility, I guess we're just looking for the nod, uh, the kind of approval to say, "Yeah, uh, let's see what it looks like." Um, we want to try to go out to other... I'm one, I'm the executive pastor of Berlin Christian Fellowship, um, but we want to try to, uh, approach other, um, churches as well as other community organizations to look at the idea, look at the possibility of trying to put some raised beds, um, probably closer to the path, um, just from a logistical standpoint, but I don't want to interfere with the stuff that's already there. Uh, so it's, I recognize the flooding issue, but I mean, I think that's why we're talking about raised beds as well. And, uh, from a, from a logistical standpoint, I think, but certainly open to hear what your thoughts are there. Um, uh, so more of a, more of a, just a, I guess, tonight, what we're just looking for is that you guys say, uh, "Go ahead and see what you can figure out." Um, just, there's no sense us approaching other organizations if you guys are completely opposed to it and wouldn't allow it. So before we pursue further, we just wanted to make sure that it was something that would be, uh, considered. Yeah. Want to add to that?
Yeah, I think, um, we're so excited and appreciative for what the council has done to begin renovating the park, and we want to build on that and love our community in a practical way. The, I think when, when the council members were at the park brainstorming, landscaping, and community gardens were brought up, so we're willing to, uh, experiment with that. Um, I've had some initial conversations with different people and groups over the last week, um, just kind of comparing notes and ideas. Um, community gardens can be a big undertaking, both logistically and relationally with the community, so we might be starting small. Uh, we're thinking about maybe one or two raised beds as a pilot project even to gauge interest. Um, and if, if there's interest, we could, I would envision maybe starting like gardening club or maybe a class where people from the community can come and learn how to develop their green thumb. Um, but a step one might be evaluating some simple landscaping projects that, that we would be willing to go to other churches and, and organizations who would be willing to love on the community with us.
Let me give you her background. Um, she has been a missionary to Kenya and Uganda for the past seven years.
About eight.
Um, she has a degree in soils, uh, and so she has been, her missions working in Kenya and Uganda is, uh, helping farmers to number one, be able to do an evaluation of the soil, and then make adjustments to that soil so that it can be proper for growing. Um, and so she's met with farmers in that nation and helped them to basically develop businesses, um, from, from learning how to farm properly. Um, last year she actually taught them how to can mangoes, so they could sell in the off-season, um, uh, when the, when the opportunity to sell at a higher price was, was better. So, um, lots and lots of experience in soils to begin with, um, and then, uh, in, in working with farmers from the very ground roots to, to then establishing, uh, full businesses, so.
So would these be flower beds, vegetable beds, all of the above, or...
Uh...
I think all of the above is on, is on the table. Um, yeah, I, with, with community gardens, there's definitely, the possibilities there to help people get access to fresh produce where maybe struggling to have access. Um, is it, can you actually have enough produce to affect a family's food budget? I don't actually know. Um, it might be the community benefits of getting people outside, getting their hands dirty, learning how to grow something, taking care of a garden, working with the kids to do the same. You know, I think the community, in my personal opinion, I'm guessing the community benefits are going to outweigh actually impacting a food budget, although there's definitely, people really get excited, there's definitely ways that you can grow a ton of vegetables on a tiny acreage. Um, but that would be later down the road depending on what momentum is built up. I could see for a start, I definitely do see landscaping and flower beds, you know, figuring out what flowers grow in, in soggy, semi-seasonally flooded areas, um, just to beautify the park, just, just as a way to love on the community. So, we're, I think with, with your blessing, with whatever guidelines you want to put in, we'll continue moving forward to develop a proposal. We'll see what budgets are, we'll see who's willing to invest with us, and then we can come back to you when we have a better, more concrete plan.
Who initially maintained the new, your church, or before you got any club perspective, or whatever?
We're, we're willing to assume authority and responsibility. Um, I don't see myself being out there hours and hours every week maintaining, so I, I have no intention on starting things when bef... I only want to start what I have buying for. So I'm willing to dream big and start small and, and grow as the buy-in grows. But I'm willing to, to be the person of, of administrative responsibility.
And, and are you envisioning then that residents would do the harvesting too, or would you work with something like the Love Center too for distribution? Or how would that work?
I'm, I haven't done enough community gardens. I, I need to talk to other organizations and see how they've done it. Um, if a church is the one buying in, then maybe everything grown would go to the Love Center. Um, I know sometimes community gardens really fall prey to tragedy of the commons when there's no individual ownership and responsibility. If the weeds can really creep up and overtake, and then you've got three poor souls that are managing everything because everyone else fell away. Um, I think if there was really good buy-in from the community, my dream or current vision until I change my mind, um, would be to rent out the plots for maybe forty or fifty dollars, but with that rental fee, they're getting a class, they're getting club access to other gardeners so that they're learning, they're growing together, you have that sense of community, but then you're individually responsible for the plot you've hired, and then, and then the harvest is completely yours.
I love that idea. I, my backyard is not conducive for a garden, and I have been trying to grow tomatoes and all the things in my flower beds, and it's not conducive.
Okay.
So I think...
Melissa can tell you why.
Tomatoes need the training.
Yeah, and they don't like cabbage. I'll tell you that right now.
Okay.
But I think a lot of people in town would benefit from this, and I for one would be more than willing to give money, get a plot. I, I love that, I love the rental idea because for those of us who don't have space, that would be perfect. And having ownership of it means, you know, when there's a bunch of beds, I don't want my beds weedy if theirs looks nice, you know?
Right.
I really think that will help with the upkeep, so I love, I love it.
Uh, we, our church, um, has been doing, uh, gardens just for our, I mean, basically, we have a group of ladies who, um, have planted a garden and then harvested it, set it on a table in the lobby of the church, and typically the elderly, uh, come and, and take, you know, those vegetables home with them. We've been doing that for years, to be honest with you. So there's a, there's an initial root to it. Um, we also are very involved with Love Center. A lot of our church members are volunteers for the Love Center, so we have a connection there as well. Um, if, if you're able to grow to that far, um, we already have those kind of connection points there. So, um, there's some, uh, I guess I would say, how did you say that? Big dreams and small, uh...
I, I heard that quote.
Well, whatever.
I didn't come out.
Whatever.
Let it somewhere. Do you make start small?
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we have the start small thing has been there for, for quite a few years just at our church. What, what we're looking to do is try to go see, um, we have an event coming at our church, uh, April first that has eight other churches involved. So can we pitch this idea at that event to say, "Hey, you know, we're looking at this, um, to see if there's interest there?" I mean, we don't want to do that if, if there wasn't, um, you know, if, if it was not going to be even considered. So, you know, it's that sort of thing that we just wanted to say, "Yeah, go ahead and explore." Um, and, and if you guys have questions or concerns that we needed to think about as we move forward, that as well.
I think it's a great idea. I'm, I'm a visual person, and so when you talk about one or two raised beds, I don't know what that looks like for one, one bed, what's the size of something like that?
Um, off the top of my head, I'm, I'm visualizing...
Okay. Oh, let's see.
Maybe something like this. I mean, we're talking...
Something like what?
From, from here to the, to the flag squared off.
Okay.
That's in, in my mind, um, I mean, I'm used to, I'm used to taking tape measures out to the field and squaring them off and seeing how much land is available and, and how you want to break it up into gardens. Um, if anything, my, my Africa work taught me how to fumble my way through projects that I don't know where I'm doing. So we, we try something, we start small, we learn from our mistakes, and we try again. Like, that's, that's my wheelhouse. That's what I'm good at.
Is the thought that it would be on, we have a south side of the baseball field, close to the...
Uh, I did. I was there on Tuesday when a lot was underwater, and so I think the raised beds northeast, I think it's closest to the trailer park community, and it's right there in the corner behind the, the playground equipment. I think that's the highest, kind of going to that back corner, it's the highest ground, so you're going to give it a raised bed, but also favor the land that isn't currently underwater.
And this past week has given you a real good indication of...
Exactly.
...where to start the plan.
Exactly. I mean, I think Nate was talking to, to Mark over the phone and said, "Well, you know, the park's underwater right now. I'd better go down and scout out, you know, what that looks like." So I did.
And, and we would like to be able to, uh, influence, I guess, um, some, hopefully, some of the trailer park folks to want to, um, come over and, and have plots and, and, uh, we've, we've done some stuff with that, um, uh, community, and so...
We love on this and encourage them.
And are still doing stuff with that community. We have some events that we're, we'll be contacting Nate about, just make sure we're okay, can we have the restrooms open on these dates, um, kind of thing. So, uh, throughout this year, so, um, yeah, our hope is that, that we can kind of engage them. So to have it close to them where they're seen and, and maybe creating a little curiosity is, is a part of what we want to be able to do as well.
Would the, would the beds be made out of railroad ties or what?
I would have to research. Um, so I would talk to, I've got a couple leads on organizations who currently do community gardens. Um, I've got other connections with avid green thumb gardening people, so I would consult with them and then get back to you on, on that question.
I think we would, I mean, I drive, every day I drive by a sawmill that burnt down, and there's just tons of wood sitting there just going to waste. I'm like, can I just stop by and see, "Hey, what do you know with this wood? Any chance I can use some of it?" So, um, I'm not, I mean, I guess I'm a little bit more, uh, I don't have any challenge with doing that. So, uh, I've, I've, I started the, uh, the Amish Country Half Marathon, so I'm a little bit of that, uh, community entrepreneurial, let's, let's get together and see what we can do, this kind of thing, so.
And Nate, the location that they mentioned, do you have any objections to doing anything else?
I think from what we initially talked, I was thinking about spots in that corner, if we want to suggest, or down at the south end of that side of the park, closer to the, say, in the curb spur, somewhere in there.
Okay.
But still along the trail.
Mm-hmm.
But that's typically wet, very wet.
That's nice for drive-in, if people were, if people were driving in and parking, that's good. But from a, from a, I guess, looking at the two from the standpoint of just gaining curiosity and being able to see it, um, it feels to me that it's more visual where it's by the playground, by, by the baseball field, it's kind of in that little corner there, so.
Do we need to make a motion for them so they can start in endorsement?
I think you've got your support. I, I haven't heard anybody say absolutely not, so at this point, I think you're going to proceed with gathering support, and then come back and let us know what you want to do.
Okay.
Wonderful.
We're excited about this. Thank you.
Appreciate your time. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Thank you.
Do you have motion to suspend reading minutes?
Second.
Holland.
Aye.
Offie.
Aye.
She maker.
Aye.
Colin.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
House better.
Aye.
Any dishes or cushions in the mess? You have a motion passed.
She maker, I assume.
Second. She maker.
Aye.
Colin.
Aye.
Offie.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
House better.
Aye.
Holland.
Thank you. Resolution 2022-06, any question on the building seat? Do you have a motion to pass?
Make a motion, aye.
Second.
Colin.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
She maker.
Aye.
Offie.
Aye.
Offie.
Aye.
Holland.
Aye.
Thank you. Chief.
Hi, yes. Uh, last Monday Connor Bailey gave me a letter of resignation. It was dated February 21st, and it would, his last day would be March 7th, um, so I think council will accept that.
Second. Holland. House better.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Colin.
Aye.
Offie.
Aye.
She maker.
Aye.
And I also have, um, I'd like council to recommend the council hiring of Morgan Newman for a full-time patrol officer. Um, he actually just kind of found us on a whim. He was coming through town, seen the cruiser setting outside, checked online, seen we had an opening, um, brought out the application. He lives in Kettering, so when we had him come up to do testing, we kind of hammered him on one day. He was here pretty much forever, uh, to get everything done, but, um, speaking with him, I think it'll be a good thing. He has connections to the Shreve area, um, and his words were, to me, were either the Shreve area connections were going to go down with him, or he was going to come up here. So, he's currently employed at a hospital as a police officer, and he's looking more for the patrol work. Um, being in the hospital is not quite, quite like the average, the, the normal police work, so, um, he's wanting to have some experience with that. Seems to be a good fit. Um, so if you guys approve it, he would start on March 12th, so we get him through, get him trained, and...
Does he actually have real experience?
What, a little bit. They do it at the hospital, um, and it's not, not much. Um, he, he's taken some criminal reports, but again, it's, it's the hospital criminal reports. They don't even do the, like, the, the Ohio-based reporting. Um, they just kind of do internal stuff, but he has, to where they've done, you know, they end up with arresting people, taking people to court, um, so he's been through that.
Where did he go to school? I mean, his academy?
His, his academy?
Yeah.
Um... Green County Career Center Police Academy in Xenia. He's been in, uh, in the National Guard for several years. Um... Since 2020 till now, he's been in the National Guard, but he's been overseas deployed, um, state-sized deployed. So, um, he's a, he's a, I don't know what they're, they, he flies drones. I'm not sure what they're exactly called, so he's supposedly going to get his civilian drone license, so if we ever come up with him, we need a drone, I would have a drone pilot. Um, so, but he has, he's, uh, 29, so he, he's a little bit older. Um, he's not, you know, like I said, he's worked at the hospital for, hmm, not quite a year. And I think it was more of a, a location. Um, he's, he had told me he's not interested in working in a big city or a bigger agency. Um, so something like this is kind of what he's interested in, and, um, like I said, just, just kind of on a whim, um, they were coming through town and, and he seen the cruiser and checked us out and said, "Well, we're one of the few that had applications online," so he felt out the application, dropped it off. Uh, it just happened to be the day after our last meeting, whenever the next, like, um, last meeting Tuesday, I posted for a dispatch position. Um, Wednesday is when he dropped the application off to us. So, um, you know, we, we interviewed him. Everything seems to be good. Haven't got any bad reports on, on background or anything, so I think it'll work. He, he told me if he could, if I wanted him here tomorrow, he'd be here tomorrow. Um, obviously, I told him, "Don't be burning any bridges. You got your time," so.
So chief, we still are short one patrol...
Yes.
Officer that if he was hired, if he was hired, and then one dispatcher.
Yes. Yep, and I do have, uh, my auxiliary officer that I talked about, we'll give him a shot, and, um, so far it looks good. So hopefully by next meeting, we'll have our, our minds made up and we'll see where we go. That's all I have.
Referring to his age, he's a mere child.
What's that?
I said referring to his age, he's a mere child. To me.
I'll make a motion to approve the hiring.
Doesn't matter.
Colin.
Aye.
Offie.
Aye.
She maker.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
House better.
Aye.
Thank you. Nate?
All right, um, design review board to meet Wednesday night. This is one of the rare meets where we have council and design review and planning and zoning in the same week for the roof addition at Page 15 Ministries, and then also signage for Troyer Sweet Shop in the old Young Music Building. Uh, planning and zoning, where we do have that sign-up patient variance, they're, they're wanting square footage, and then the final site plan for trailer subdivision. Uh, resurfacing, working through, there's, I had a few phone calls today with the engineer on our resurfacing, some questions they had, so we're working on those plans. Hopefully have that out of the bin here before too long. The ODOT-TAP project, um, been working with the Rightofway consultant. They've got all the Rightofway, um, calculations and title work, and everything's all done. The intro and offer letters are going out to those four property owners here in the next week or two, and then just keep working through that, let's get the Rightofway button up, then start working on utility relocations, and then construction next summer. Nothing on the, uh, more proper properties. Did have a few things I got to Arnie Oliver to get that to clean so we could submit it. Dump truck, we're working through the specs on the truck, and we did hear back from another manufacturer's rep that wants to get a shot at it, so we're meeting with him next week, I believe it is. We did the VCF request for the community gardens. I do have one item for executive session on that condition of property, and then just this afternoon, I was contacted by Kimball. They're trying, I was, I was trying to what time of year it is.
I was going to ask you about...
They're, they're trying to get cleanup day attention. Uh, last year we did it on April 22nd, I believe was the date. So looking ahead, Easter is April 17th this year. I was thinking either April 23rd or 30th, the weekend after, well, one or two weekends after Easter. Does that, do you have any preference, any input?
23rd is fine.
23rd, okay. We'll go with the 23rd. All right, I believe that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There's a possibility that, you know, if we don't get the funding for the demolition of those two houses, fire department room from down?
I don't know how much of that they do anymore. The, I know the EPA permits a pretty tough to get on that.
It's tough to get a permit to do that. We had lots of problems, we made it one on Worcester Road because it was directly, um, from Sunshine Hill and made lots of issues with that.
It's the air, air permitting that ties it up usually.
Nate, going back to the, the paving, is, if there's any money left, I mean, can we really look at sealing the cracks in the post office parking lot?
Yeah.
I mean, some of those are really big, deep cracks, and if those aren't...
Yeah, there in South Washington is on my list too, and we want to try to salvage that as much as we can. I've, I've been talking with, um, I can't think of the name, I don't know, totally gone blank. Uh, Reclamite is the prod, the, the product. Can't think of the company's name. It used to be Strouder when they sold out. Anyways, it's a, it's a micro-surfacing. It, it's, it's like a, a sealing coat, but it's got more aggregate in it, fine aggregate. Worcester's been using it.
Is that, is that the same product we tried several years ago?
That was a slurry, a slurry seal. We did that like northern driveway view, uh, rustic.
Yeah, and we had cracked the following year.
Yeah. This Reclamite seems to be more of a, it's got more material in it as opposed to liquid or non-material. Totally gone blank tonight, but yeah, Worcester's had good luck with it. We actually patented one up and met with the rep, and looked at a few of the streets they did, and they've held up really well for their ages. He showed us a couple different stages. One that was just done, one that was a year, maybe two years old, and they were able to be doing it well. Granted, a lot of, if these were residential streets, they don't have the, have the truck traffic like most of our streets do, but, you know, they still have trash trucks and things like that, buses. But, and it's something I definitely want to try to address.
Paul? I have something for executive session on the panel now, and then, uh, speaking of the, uh, post office parking lot, I don't know that if you know that we, the quiet title action was completed on that, so we do own the entire parking lot now.
All right, moving on to legislation. Third reading of Resolution 2022-03 by Title Home. The resolution, the resolution granting consent to the Hollywood Department of Transportation, Director of Transportation, pleaded a call to rehabilitation project, partially within the Village of Millersburg. Any questions? Do you have a motion to pass?
Are you still moved? She maker?
She maker.
Aye.
Holland.
Aye.
Offie.
Aye.
Colin.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
House better.
Thank you. Second reading of Resolution 2022-03 by Title Home. The resolution granting Second reading of resolution two thousand twenty-two day zero-five by Tyler Holmes. A resolution to approve the application agreement for CRE tax incentives regarding P D to be holding company LLC, the E L Transport Incorporated, and authorizing the mayor to sign the agreement on behalf of the bill. Are there any questions? Any committee reports?
Uh, back on February sixteenth, the Tree City USA Board met and started our spring planning as far as, uh, scheduling the Arbor Day celebration with the kids at the elementary school, and looking at some upcoming, uh, planting sites, and I was asked to pass on the thanks of the committee to council for the continued financial support with that line item for the plantings every year that we've done for a number of years. And, and I was asked too, if, the way the process works now is, the committee kind of decides on streets or neighborhoods where we think plantings need to be done, and then once the sites are picked, Nate gets in contact with property owners and to inform them that we'd like to plant a tree there, and if somebody objects, then we just skip them, we, we are forcing a, a tree on someone who doesn't want one. And, and for purposes of being able to better plan the plantings, um, the, the committee was curious if the village intends to keep that stance, or if they would ever, uh, become more kind of aggressive in, in saying, well, we're just going to plant a tree. Just, uh, again, for purposes of being able to better plan the plantings for the, the group, do we, because that is a decision that we would probably make here, so is that something that we envision staying the same, or, or at some point being more aggressive? Just for purposes of discussion, I'm not tying anything in tonight.
I do not agree with forcing any homeowner to have a tree out there.
Okay.
Yeah.
How many people decline?
It, it varies, usually it, it was just a handful, but this past year, there were quite a number, I forget how many you said there were.
We had our plenty of trees to plant, and I, I'm thinking like eight or ten such people that we had picked out, were very adamant, they did not want a tree, and I, I kinda sympathize, I, if you don't want a tree, I don't wanna force one on you. It is our right of way, we have the ability to do it, but it just seems kinda at the end of the force somebody to stare at a tree every day that they don't want.
Clean up leaves and take care of everything, because it may belong to us, but they are the ones taking care of it.